I call to order the meeting of Verona Common Council for Monday, August 28th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. I will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Helmke.
Present.
Alder Person Hoekst.
Present.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Found his phone. I'm here.
And Alder Person Tucker Long.
Here.
All right, we have enough people for a quorum, so we will move on to public comments. If any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Good evening. My name is Tony DeRosa with Fiduciary Real Estate Development. Our address is 789 North Water Street, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, 53202. I'm here this evening to share a couple of comments regarding the Agenda Item 11, Sub 3, which is the annexation agreement with Fred Verona HC LLC pertaining to land adjacent to County Highway PD. There's two provisions, I think, that were redlined in the document that you have in your staff pack this evening that I'd just like to share a few notes in regards. I'll keep this very brief. The first one is in Section 4I, Sub 1. This is the Morningside Traffic Signal Provision. This is a provision that us fiduciary real estate development as the developer would be responsible for 9.2% of future costs of a potential future intersection that would be constructed at Morningside and County Highway M. We appreciate that three years, the timeframe in the original draft may not be sufficient for the city to determine the need for a future signal, but are concerned about leaving the exposure period open for 10 years. And we had respectfully requested to see if there was a compromise that the city would consider a five-year period for us. The cost to us that's currently noted as an estimate in the agreement is currently noted at $41,000. Our development, based on the traffic study that's been reviewed by the city, concluded that our development is not triggering the need for a traffic signal at this intersection at this time, yet we're still willing to contribute. We just don't want our obligation to extend out a full decade in that regards. The only other comment I have is in regards to Section 4K, Sub 1. This is a water looping provision. This is a provision that requires us to install a second water connection to our development upon the earlier of five years from the date the agreement is signed, or when we start Phase 2 of our two-phase development. As we had mentioned and discussed with staff, as well as the city attorney, we have no problem with installing the looping system to make the second water connection. Our concern is that we may not have the legal ability to do so if we have a neighboring property owner that may be uncooperative with us. We can't contractually agree to something that may be impossible and be under control, and I don't think that's the city's intent either, to create a provision that obligates us to something that may not be feasible. I know staff has been looking at alternatives, I'll probably discuss this evening, that would be applicable in the event an off-site easement could not be maintained, or obtained, I should say. And if there's any other questions at the Agenda item, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. If any other members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so. Seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we will move on to Item 5, which is approve the minutes from the August 14th, 2023 Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments, or motions to approve? Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second? Second by Alder Cronin. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the August 14th, 2023 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes are approved. We'll move on to Item 6, which is Mayor's Business. I don't have anything for you, so we'll move on to Item 7, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing no hands, we will move on to Item 8, Administrator's Report. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. We have a joint plan committee meeting this Thursday at the town of Verona concerning a parcel for, I think it's a rezone. We also are conducting an interview for Public Works Director next week. And then lastly, we are starting the department presentations for the Finance Committee. So various department directors will be coming through the month of September to give their presentations on their department budgets. That's really all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Olick? Seeing none, we will move on to Item 9, Engineer's Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the North Water Booster Station project is slated for bidding in early fall, as well as the Well 6 project. And then also that the North Nine Mound Sidewalk Edition project, the easement is moving forward for that project, so I'm looking forward to starting construction soon on that project as well. Otherwise, I don't have any other updates. With that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on Engineer's Report? Seeing no hands, we will move on to Item 10, which is Committee Reports. First up, we have 10A, which is Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by making a motion for the payment of the bills in the amount of $1,308,431.
Motion by Alder Kemp. Is there a second? Second by Alder Helmke, I believe. Alder Kemp.
Yes, thank you. First, we have a payment in the amount of $123,446 to I State Truck for the purchase of a patrol truck chassis for the Public Works Department, a payment of $168,767 to AECom for engineering services on various projects, a payment of $249,243 to the City of Madison, that's for our payment for the County M Construction Project, and finally, a payment of $253,731 to Jefferson Fire and Safety for new air packs for our firefighters.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills in balance specified, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nothing further, sir.
Excellent. We move on to 10B, which is Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Alder Hoekst.
Thank you. Item 10B2, I'd like to make a motion to deny the operator license for Eugene Chrisler.
Motion by Alder Hoekst. Is there a second? Second by Alder Touche. Alder Hoekst.
Thank you. Earlier in our Public Safety and Welfare Committee meeting, we voted 2 to 0 after having a discussion with Attorney Kleinmeyer and Chief Drusler.
Mr. Kleinmeyer?
To the extent that the council is going to approve the motion made by the committee, I would just say, I think you'd want to add to the end of that for the reasons stated in the August 1st letter from Chief Drusler to the applicant.
And that was the understanding of the person making the motion and the second? Okay.
But I'm certainly here to answer whatever questions that you, to the extent there are questions, I'm here to answer them.
Alder Helmke.
So my understanding was that we were trying to understand what rehabilitation meant, and I'm curious what was discussed in the meeting as to why Mr. Chrisler doesn't meet the requirements for the rehabilitation.
Well, so, I mean, I'm certainly willing to get into specifics, but I'm not, without getting into specifics, the law has changed such that if someone has an exempt, what's deemed an exempt offense, then if a municipality is going to deny an operator's license, the municipality does not have to take into consideration any type of rehabilitation that the applicant may want to provide. And in fact, we also don't have to give our reasons in writing. Now, we would, if that's what the council wants, is going to do is deny it, we would give our reasons in writing. But because of one of the offenses that the individual was convicted of, the rehabilitation concept is not required to be applied by the common council. Now, the police department has made a recommendation. As city attorney, I support the recommendation. That being said, this is a council decision. And so if you were to determine that notwithstanding the offense and the fact that the police department believes that it's substantially related to the license activity, you, as a council, do have the authority to grant the application if you believe, I mean, my understanding is that the applicant made a presentation at the committee meeting last, two weeks ago, and at the council meeting, you have the ability to grant the application, notwithstanding what the police department or the committee has said. The one thing that I'll say is, we have an obligation as a city to treat everybody the same. And if the council has the discretion to issue this operator's license, I can't imagine a scenario, other than potentially multiple OWIs, I don't imagine a scenario in the future where the council will be in a position to then deny an operator's license in light of the number of convictions that are stated in the August 1st letter, the fact that one is a felony, and the fact that the multiple of those convictions are substantially related to the license activity. All that being said, you have the discretion to issue the license if you'd like to.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Okay, so the, I know there was a long list of items. What year did the item that we're most concerned about in this happen? Is it all of them, or is it just, it seemed like there was one in particular that...
Well, I would say that when you look at the letter itself, there's five bullet points that identify convictions. I would avoid the middle one, disorderly conduct. Really, to do that, you need to look at the circumstances of the offense, because disorderly conduct is so broadly stated. But I would say the first and second, and the third and fourth bullet points are all substantially related to the license activity. Two of those convictions occurred in 2002, one occurred in 2005, and one occurred in 2018.
Okay. Thank you. Can I make a comment to my own personal comment? Okay, so my personal comment on this is I understand, I understand to some degree why the committee wanted to do this. However, I am a firm believer that if people are going to rehabilitate themselves, and Mr. Chrisler clearly has put in the work from what he has stated, and I am supportive of that type of activity. We can't have, we, as a community, we want people to come out of the criminal justice system having bettered themselves. And I think it's really amazing that he has done that. So I am, I'm against denying it.
Other questions or comments? Alder Kemp.
Attorney Kleinmeyer, can you tell me, let's say we, let's say this body approves the liquor license. You made the comment that in the future, you can't imagine a scenario under which any future council, not even necessarily this one, but a future council would be able to deny someone, given the circumstances here. What type of liability would that present for the city if, say, for example, we approved this, but then later on decided to deny someone else?
It's going to, theoretically, you could have some form of a discrimination claim that would be filed against the, again, I mean, passage of time, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say that the city of Verona, for the rest of the existence of the city, would not be able to change its position. You have a different council a few years down the road. That being said, we are still judged as a council right now, based on what the council did eight years ago, when maybe only a few of you were on. Liability is, it's more of a, whenever a municipality denies a liquor license, the applicant always has the ability to go to circuit court to see, to have it overturned. It doesn't specifically refer to anything like discrimination, but, you know, to the extent that, you know, someone is alleging that we've treated them differently from someone else, and it doesn't need to be discrimination, as we commonly think of it, it could be an individual who's not even in one of the protected classes, but still would be able to say, "I don't feel that I was treated fairly." A municipality always has an obligation to act reasonable, and if that individual would likely argue, "I think that the municipality has been unreasonable by denying my application a few years later versus approving this one." And so that would be the basis to seek to have it overturned. The future action, I would say.
Okay, I'm torn on this. I, like, like Alder Helmke, I think that people do have an opportunity, hopefully, once they have gone through the criminal justice system. The idea is that, you know, they are able to rehabilitate and then build, you know, a successful life for themselves. They can, you know, have a family, they can get jobs and things like that. And, you know, far too often, we see how difficult it is for individuals after they come out of the criminal justice system. On the other hand, me personally, as an attorney, I can also see the position that that puts the city in. I'm inclined, at least in this instance, because I've done a little bit of legwork on my own, I heard the applicant's statement. I've spoken to the city attorney, and I know the owner of the bar, I'm inclined to support in this instance. I don't necessarily think that in the future, that it would necessarily put the city behind the eight ball with respect to liability. I think that people do have an opportunity to make themselves better, and I think we should try and focus on that. That's all. Thank you.
Alder Kimmet.
Firstly, apologies for being late, but I just want to echo what Mara and Chad have said. We either believe in the ability of the criminal justice system to rehabilitate people and give them successful futures, or we don't. And if you are going to deny someone a job opportunity later, what are you saying to a person who's coming out of the criminal justice system? You're saying, "I'm sorry, I don't believe that worked, and you can't move forward." I am in favor of giving this person a chance and saying, "I believe in our criminal justice system." So, thanks.
Other questions or comments? Alder Posey.
Can I ask a question to the committee members, just because, was it just around the reason for the 2 to 0 vote? Was it around that it's in support of the letter and in support of kind of our stance and our liability? What was that discussion like, just because of the fact that I feel like we do a lot of work at committee levels, and a lot more work than we necessarily get to do in this space? And I'd love to hear more from that perspective.
I'll give my perspective. At the committee level, I'll just say, from two weeks ago, we asked the applicant to speak and share, you know, why we should consider giving him an operator's license. I would say he made a compelling argument for rehabilitation and everything that I would say was generally supported. Unfortunately, for me, there were details that he told us verbally that differed from the record that we had seen, that the police department had shared with us, that didn't match. And some of the details in that record gave me enough alarm that I decided it was not appropriate to have happen in the city. I think there's, it was worth a look for me to help me make my decision. Thank you.
Alder Hoekst?
Yeah, just to briefly follow up, I guess also the, you know, if we, if part of this is going to be having the police department make a recommendation, not that we always have to follow that, but I think, I think they made it, you know, they did their legwork, they presented a good case of why they feel like, you know, they're the kind of experts on not only the, I guess, the criminal background, but also the nature of what those are, right? And so that's what, that's, I'm going to follow that recommendation, because they're the experts.
Alder Kemp.
Attorney Kleinmeyer, can you answer for the council, let's say that we denied his license. Is he allowed to work in that, in that space at all? Or, I mean, can he be, can he serve alcohol in that, in that business? What would, what would be required for him to be able to do that?
So, you can serve...
Sorry, I'm sorry. Let me just say that, functionally, what does the liquor license do for him?
So, allows an individual to be the only bartender at a facility. Operator's license is, you don't have to have an operator's license to be a bartender, but if you're going to be the only person serving there, then you need an operator's license.
Okay, so, in, so in this situation, what we're talking about is if he, for whatever reason, is on a shift and he's by himself, he would then be able to serve alcohol. If he doesn't have a license, then he wouldn't. And what you're saying, and what the police department's recommendation is, is because the offenses were substantially close to what he'd be doing, that we should deny that. So we're not effectively saying that he couldn't bartend, as long as there's someone else there with a license. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing no further discussion. Oops, sorry. Alder Tucker Long.
Are we able to ask questions about the things listed, the convictions listed?
I would say this, no. If it's disorderly conduct, then we could get into that, but I don't really believe that, I mean, from my standpoint, that's where you would get into the details. But the normal rule is you look at the actual offense and what the conviction is for, and essentially, the analysis stops there. So, as much as I would let, you know, always want you to have the ability to ask questions, in this instance, especially when you look at the four bullet points that I had talked about, the first and second and third and, or fourth and fifth, those really are just, the decision by the police department is based on the actual, the named conviction itself, not getting into the underlying facts.
Am I able to ask a question about what that named conviction means?
Sure.
Okay. So, for Item 5, the conviction for sex registry violation, is that a paperwork violation? Is that, like, not filing paperwork, or what is...
I had looked at that offense. That's definitely, it looks to me like there could be multiple different circumstances that could lead to that.
Okay.
But not filing paperwork, maybe one. When I looked at it and read it, I kind of just, I made a note saying, "Failure to comply" was effectively, and there could be various things, and there could be circumstances, like, you know, but that's what I looked at and found.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
And was number 5, was that the one that occurred in 2018?
Yes.
Okay, so the, I'll just be very honest without saying, the ones that were more serious were almost 20 years ago.
Yeah, 2002 and 2005.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of, yeah, so, we'll do this by a raise of hands, just because I don't want to, don't want to leave this up to my hearing. All those in favor of the operator license denial for Eugene Chrisler, raise your hand. One, two, three. All those opposed, so we have five against and three in favor, so it does not pass.
So now I think someone should make a motion to approve the operator's license.
All right. Alder Helmke.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the operator license for Eugene Chrisler.
Motion by Alder Helmke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kimmet. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on this motion? Alder Tucker Long.
This is a question for the attorney. Do you recommend any additional language we add into this motion to try to protect future councils?
No, I just, I think the action that you're taking will kind of speak for itself.
Okay.
Alder Kimmet.
Are we allowed to address the applicant?
I mean, I think the attorney would maybe prefer not to.
I mean, your action is your action. I mean, I would, I think, outside the scope of the meeting, you certainly have the ability to do that, but since there's already been a motion and a second on this, we typically, at that point in time, would not then have another speaker come up.
Okay. I meant, like, just in general, like...
Oh, oh, I thought you meant to have somebody come up and speak. No, go ahead.
I just hope that we are taking this leap of faith, that the person is going to operate within the law. Please don't make us wrong.
Other, Alder Posey.
Sorry, since I'm the only one who hasn't spoke yet, as far as reasons for denial, I think it's a really hard decision to make, especially because I do believe in rehabilitation. However, I also trust the work that gets done at committee levels and with our police department and the research. So that's the reason for mine.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of granting the operator license for Eugene Chrisler, say aye.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
And I have, I'm assuming it's the same vote as before, and it passes 5 to 3. Anything further from public safety?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to 10C, which is Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche. Alder Touche.
Make any motion to recommend approval for an agreement with JT Engineering for Construction Inspection Services for Ardent Glen, Phase One.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Humke. Alder Touche.
Thank you, thank you. One second. Pull up the notes. I scrolled past them, my bad. There we go. Nope, sorry. Didn't bookmark it, my bad.
Are you looking for Dr. Glenn memo?
No, no, not the memo, these are administrative notes. Glen for operator. Are they the same?
I don't see administrative-
Yeah, normally they're in a pack and then-
Page 11.
Page 11?
Okay.
Page 18, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Bingo. Thank you, thank you. Is it?
Page 11 is the memorandum.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. Oh, I scrolled too far. There we go. Okay, so two items are brought forward on behalf of Public Works Department. Construction Inspection Services, Ardent Glen, Phase One. Construction of public improvements for Phase One of Ardent Glen Development has begun in the northwest portion of the city. Staff are recommending contracting inspection services with JT Engineering, Inc., due to staff limitations within the Public Works Department. Part Two is construction inspection services for Wayland Road. Is that the other agenda item? I just want to make sure I'm not-
Yeah, it's the next one.
Okay, we'll save that one. That is it.
Okay. Questions or comments on the Construction Inspection Services for Ardent Glen, Phase One motion? Alder Kimmet.
This is more just a question on when we expect to potentially start doing that within the city again?
Sorry, I missed the last part of that?
We're contracting because we don't have the staffing availability? Do we have a timeline?
Mr. Olick?
Well, I get to say that we're interviewing candidates next month.
Well, next week.
We're both right.
I'm unsure, is this expertise that was typically done by the city or do we have a second contract with engineering for inspecting this?
So, it was a mix. There were city staff that were able to do this, but depending on the workload, sometimes it was contracted out.
Other questions or comments? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the agreement with JT Engineering for Construction Inspection Services for Ardent Glen, Phase One, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes. Alder Touche.
Thank you. I make a motion to recommend approval for an agreement with JT Engineering for Construction Inspection Services for Wayland Road Construction.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
Thank you, thank you. Scroll in, here we go. Construction of public improvements along the eastern section of Wayland Road has begun. Staff are recommending contracting inspection services with JT Engineering, Inc., due to staff limitations with the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Motion before the body, questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the agreement with JT Engineering for Construction Inspection Services for Wayland Road Construction, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes. Anything further from Public Works?
Not that I'm aware of.
Excellent. We'll move on to 11, which is new business. First up, we have 11-1, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the lease with Hometown Community Church for the use of the senior center. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of an existing two-year lease. It's for another two years. It comes to us from the Verona Senior Center and they're requesting the renewal of the lease with Hometown Community Church. If approved, the two-year term is effective September 1st, or next month, to August 31st, 2025. Due to slower-than-predicted growth of the congregation, though, the lease contains a tiered fee structure. Rent starts at $1,000 a month for the first six months, then increases to $1,300 a month for the remainder of the term. Based on availability, the contract also has a clause for the church to use space up to two additional evenings per week at no additional charge. Overall, this lease represents a $2,200 increase in revenue over the previous two-year lease.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions on this item? Alder Kimmet.
Is the senior center okay with the additional two days?
Two years?
Two extra days a week.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Great question. Yes, this was negotiated between the director of the senior center and Hometown Community Church.
Alder Posey.
I'll also add, speaking with the director, that they have been good tenants, it's been a good working relationship, and so I'm in support of this.
Questions, comments, or motions on this item? Alder Posey.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease between the City of Verona and Hometown Community Church.
Motion by Alder Posey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kimmet. Motion before the body, questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the lease agreement with Hometown Community Church for the use of the senior center, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes. We got two items now that are in closed session. I guess I would consult with the city attorney. Would it make sense to go into one closed session for both of these or go in and then go back out?
I would say on item number two, there's the potential that you're not going to even need to go into closed session. And then, so if you want to talk about that one first, and then item three, we can definitely have a little bit of a discussion in open session, but that's the one where we, as staff of, we definitely want to convene in closed session.
Okay. I guess then we'll just move into open session for item two, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the draft lease agreement with the Art House 360 for city-owned property at 401 West Verona Avenue. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is before us tonight to really have a good discussion on responsibilities as both the Art House 360 group and the City of Verona, and what that relationship is going to look like within the terms of a lease. So, a little background information, I got an excellent tour two weeks ago of the vision, of the building itself, the vision for it, and needless to say, the former elementary school needs some work. I'm pretty sure we all, we all know that. And what I'm trying to gain is an understanding of what we view our relationship to that building and to that group, what that looks like. My understanding is, and Director Adam Wasak took a tour last week with a possible contractor for the group, and there's a number of items that are very expensive that will need to be done. Extending three-phase utilities, a significant length of, up to a half mile. There's also telescoping of the sewer, possibly redoing the sewer that feeds out of the building. There's concrete work. There's a lot of various things, and I guess what I'm trying to understand along with the group, is our responsibility, the theory of the case is that here's a shell of a building, the lease is a dollar, and you take care of the rest? Or is there some version of cost sharing within there or what have you? That's really what I'm trying to get my arms around to make sure that if we say, here's a lease going forward, you know, what is, what are your responsibilities, what are our responsibilities? We, I will say, have already said that because the park is being developed right next door, maintenance of the exterior of the building, including like lawn cutting and maintenance and things like that, that's pretty easy for us to do. But when you're talking about HVAC systems and, you know, needing new ones and all, you know, all the various things that go into an old building, I don't know where the line starts and stops.
I have a quick question. For the things like the electrical and sewer and everything, do we have a cost estimate on how much? Because like, it's easy to be generous if it's not a lot of money, but if it's a lot of money, like, the budget's going to constrain us a lot.
Well, three-phase electric, a half mile is significant.
How significant?
I don't have a number. I'm sorry, I just, I just don't right now.
Okay.
I'm guessing, I guess where I'm going to is, you know, is it a matter of getting estimates together and bringing it to you and being like, okay, we could do this, but not that?
I mean, for me, yeah. It's the cost, because like, if it was like a smaller amount and it's like, well, technically this isn't our responsibility, but we really want the art house to succeed and we can do it, I'd be like, well, let's do it anyway. But if it's kind of like, this is going to be a million dollars, then that's, that's pretty hard to fit into the budget. As smart as Brian is and everything, I don't know where, I don't know where it's going to come from. So, Alder Touche.
Is there a comfortable member, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have one in my head. I guess I would have to see what things look like. I don't know how other people feel. Alder Tucker Long and then Alder Posey.
I'm wondering, when you're talking about running the utilities to the building, we are running utilities already to the park immediately next door to it? I'm curious why we're having to run it a half a mile?
It's not the three-phase electric.
Okay.
It's single-phase to the park.
Gotcha.
It's a different style of, completely different style of electricity.
Okay. And what about all the apartment buildings that were just built around it?
Yep. I can't give you the details the second on that, but I'm more than happy to do the research and get back to you.
Yeah, I'd love to know why it's a half mile.
Yeah, no problem at all. The one thing I will say is, as it was presented to me at least, the original understanding was here's a shell of a building, and not knowing anything or what group or anybody would go into it, that's basically, if I understand it right, the RFP process was through Steve Brown Apartments, trying to see what would be a good fit for in there. But on the fiscal side, it was also presented to me that it wasn't really the city's responsibility to invest in the building itself, minus the maintenance and other, you know, things that would need to be, that we can do easily. So, that's what I'm trying to, I can, I try and quantify as best we can, work together and try and quantify the rest of it, but that's how it was presented, at least to me, by other city staff, is here's a building, we know it's an old building, we know it's going to need a lot of investment, you know, work with a nonprofit, in this case, to hash things out. I could be totally wrong on that, and you can correct me.
Okay. I got Alder Posey, Alder Kimmet, and then Alder Touche.
I do believe we have not just what we talked about earlier, kind of the one-off of the congregation using the senior center, but we do have other buildings that we own and lease and have had to do repairs on. So, that could be a guide as far as what we have done previously, as far as for other buildings and other entities that we've worked with in the past, as far as what this one, because I'm one of the folks whose kids actually went to school there and know everything that needs to get done. Yeah, it's a pretty penny, and I've spoken with them about that as well. So, yeah.
I have Alder Kimmet, Alder Touche, and then Alder Cronin. Okay.
Okay, so let me get on my high horse a little bit. I feel like budgets and where we spend our money is a values statement, and we're trying to build this welcoming and walkable and wonderful downtown. I feel like we need to put our money where our mouth is. If we want to entice wonderful businesses and nonprofits to come be with us in Verona, and we're going to keep the building, landlords have a responsibility to maintain their buildings. So, I think to echo Luke, the numbers have to be right, but I do think there's a creative way to get there, to make sure that we're doing our responsibility of maintaining this historic building within our community, because that's important to us. We don't have very many left. And being good to the tenants and making sure that they can be successful. I know in the past, we've talked about getting a grant writer, someone, especially for a nonprofit going in there, I feel like there are more creative ways to find the money to make this happen, but I do think it has to be a priority. So, instead of going, well, the money's not there, we need to put the effort in and find the money, because this is very important to the downtown area, not specifically the art house, but the building itself. So, let's, let's make the work happen so that this can stay in the community.
I have Alder Touche and then Alder Cronin. Alder Cronin.
Thank you. So, I would also just echo that there was a reason why we, as a city, kept the building instead of allowing it to be demolished when that site was redeveloped. I think finances are important, but we also need to think about what the benefit to the city is going to be. So, the amount of traffic that it brings in, the amount of people who will spend money in Verona should also be taken into consideration. But I also don't think it was a surprise to anybody that this building was going to need work. And from my understanding for Art House 360, they are aware, they are working on capital campaigns and finding ways to make this building not just livable, but enjoyable for everybody who would get to use that building. But if we just hang on to this building and let it sit and deteriorate and deteriorate and deteriorate, then what was the point of saving it at all? That's my two cents.
I just want to give a little background to the, initially, when we put together a conveyance document for this property, it was potentially going to be sold to Art House 360. In that instance, we had language in the document where we effectively would have executed it, but it would not have become effective until they had had, I think they had to reach 1.4 million dollars, because I think that's what they had estimated the cost to be to rehabilitate it. I was told that at some point in time, for various, I think, good and reasonable reasons, the art house said, you know what, we're not interested in purchasing it anymore, so we're looking at leasing it. And so, one of the components to think about for a lease is not only what you've been talking about now, but my understanding is they need, at some point in time, whenever you are a nonprofit, you want to have something in writing that says, okay, yep, we're going to be able to do this, and then you go to your donors and get that money. Sometimes a letter of intent is used, but letters of intent are really not that helpful because at the end of the day, the last paragraph always allows both parties to walk away from the deal for whatever reason. So, one of the things to think about if you're willing to move forward with a lease with Art House 360 is we still have the ability, if it makes sense to the city and makes sense to them, to basically have a lease that gets signed, but doesn't become effective until a date in the future if they need to raise some money. And the last thing I'll say is just, I would say it's standard practice in leases where if it turns out that the city is going to do a lot more of the, incur a lot more of the cost of the rehabilitation, you're going to have a lot more control over the use of the property. The more that the tenant is willing to kick in and cover things, that usually means then the tenant has a little bit more control of the use, and that's something to think about as you're going through this process.
Other questions or comments? I have Alder Humke, then Alder Hoaks, then myself.
Yeah, so I agree with Alder Cronin and, oh my gosh, yes. Our values in making this property happen, the Art House 360 is, I was so excited about it, I still am super excited about it. I think for all the reasons mentioned, like, it makes a lot of sense to figure out what is the middle ground that we can, as the mayor said, like, manage. And I definitely think this is going to bring vibrancy to our community. I think it's important. And so, what is the dollar value that that means to us? I don't know, so I definitely would like to see the financial implications of what all you're suggesting, and I look forward to seeing that and seeing what we can do.
Alder Hoaks and then myself.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess, I didn't know, we had moved away from a ownership deal the last I heard that we were transferring ownership to this group, but it seems if we're going to lease, if we're still going to hold on to it, right, we need to know numbers, right? I mean, there's obviously a reason that this group doesn't probably want to own it, right? That would be my understanding, is that it's probably very expensive. So, I mean, I can't, I can't get behind any number until, I mean, it's, it's a lot, right? So, if we're going to talk about committing things, like, we can't just commit, just like, oh, it's going to feel super good, but like, there's jobs that we can't give people, right, if we spend all this money? So, I think we need numbers, like, a lot of definite numbers before I'm on board.
I guess I have a quick question. Would potential tourism dollars be available for any of this stuff? Obviously, they would have to go through a whole process, but I'm just wondering if, like, expenses for maintaining this building, since it would draw people into downtown, would that be a qualifying expense?
I think we'd have to look into that.
Okay. Alder Kemp.
Attorney Kleinmeyer, under the draft lease agreement, what is the city required to do once that's signed? I know you mentioned that we could probably, you know, have it become effective at a later date, but if people are concerned about the cost of this- of this and, and just sitting on the finance committee, yeah, like, things are tight. So, uh, to what Alder Hoaks said, it, it can be difficult. Um, what obligation right now, under the terms of that lease, just so we all understand, what obligations does the city have?
I, I would say we haven't gotten that far in the negotiation discussion. And my understanding of what played out here was, we had put together the conveyance document, and that was really specific to the art house and to the property. Uh, I was told by Mr. Sayer that, you know, for various reasons, all of them reasonable, the art house said, we don't want to own the land, let's look into a lease. At that point in time, I put together a lease based on a municipal lease that I've worked on before, but there's, and that was, and essentially here was the framework. I mean, it's pretty detailed, but certainly getting into things like who's going to cover costs associated with improvements, especially if they're significant. That is not part of that document yet.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was the case. So effectively, we're not roped into anything financially right now, other than just saying we have a lease agreement between the city and this group, correct?
Well, we actually don't even have a lease yet. We just have a draft document. Yeah.
All right, well.
Uh, other questions or comments? Alder Kimmit?
Um, so I know in discussions with the chamber, they've occasionally mentioned, one, the grant writing needing to be a thing that exists, um, and two, having some kind of arm of the city that does fundraising for arts, particularly we've seen a bunch of murals go up, um, and bringing more of that to downtown. Is that something that would be more of, a more manageable cost that we could potentially bring on someone, like an arts committee that could find people who would be willing to help fund things like this that would bring vibrancy to our downtown? Or is that something outside of the scope of the city? Because if we have a chamber, it seems like that could be part of that body.
Um, it might be outside the scope of this item for what we're talking about. I mean, I would, Mr. Kleinmeyer?
I would agree with that. In other words, it's, it's an interesting idea, but I'm, um, I, I would just say that that's probably an, an action item that you would want to put on as, as a separate item to see if you want to create a committee of that nature. And theoretically, if you do create a committee of that nature, it could have an impact here.
What you are looking for is what we want to see from the lease. So I'd say yes to echo. We want to see specific numbers.
I've gotten plenty of feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just to reiterate.
It alters and a mayor and you get opinions.
Specific numbers.
That's perfectly fine, though. And, and, you know, on my end of things, I want to make this work absolutely 100%. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're also watching our budgets and things like that, too.
We're not taking.
You got to balance all, all of the interests, and that's the, that's the tough job that we have, right?
Yeah. So I guess my prompt to you would just be, think of some creative problem solving as well.
Yep. No, appreciate it all.
Uh, Alder Tucker Long?
Um, I would say that if, um, we as a city are maintaining ownership of the building, my preference would be that we have a bit more say than the tenant in how the updates are done, because I want to make sure they're done to our standards and not just, I mean, I don't think the art house would do a bad job of this, but just as a general rule, if we own the building, I'd rather us have the bigger say in how things are done, make sure it's quality and maintains the historic nature of the building and things like that.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Alder Posey?
I would say my only other comment would be around timing, if we could, because everything is torn up still now, it's probably cheaper to deal with some of the things, especially if things have to be dug and everything else, that if we could get this sooner than later, I'm guessing it would be better for everybody involved, so we don't have to tear up the brand-new park.
Yeah, right. Agreed.
Once we get, once we get out of time, once we get out of time. So Alder Posey, are you done?
I am. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So along the lines of some of the comments, and I agree with them, in, in other words, it, it seems to me, look, from a procedural standpoint, that what you need at this point is more, what are the costs associated with the building? And then, once you get that information, that's going to allow you to provide guidance to staff as it negotiates with the lease. How much are we willing to kick in based on that percentage? You know, for example, there's already in, in the draft, again, it's only a draft lease, nothing's been signed, but there is language in there to protect the exterior of the facility, um, because of the historical nature of it. So that's already there. Other things that you're going to want to be thinking about, once you find out what the city's willing to pay is term of the lease. In other words, the longer that, the, the more that the tenant kicks, kicks in, usually the longer the lease is. If the city's the one who's predominantly paying for it, the lease is going to be shorter, because we want to maintain flexibility, and the tenant has not had to invest in the property such that it would dictate a longer-term lease. Those are all things for you all to be thinking about, and also whether or not you would be willing, if we do go forward with the lease, to have it signed, but not necessarily become effective, because if there is going to be substantial, uh, uh, investment from the tenant and they need to raise the money, my understanding is they need, they need some time to be able to do that before they can actually commit to the effectiveness of the, effective date of the lease.
Uh, Alder Tucker Long?
I'm going along with that. Is there language in the draft that protects the internal historical aspects as well? Because if we do ever want to get it on the, on the historical register, it, it involves the inside, too, not just the outside.
I think there was some language, but definitely not as, as restrictive. But again, to the extent that the city would kick in maybe more money than it, maybe initially anticipated. Again, going back to the initial conveyance document, my understanding is that was going to be, you get the land for the dollar, for a dollar, because you're going to have to invest all the money into, into fixing it up. The more this changes from a conveyance to a lease, to the city paying more money, then we're going to have, the city would have more control as to what's going to happen with the building itself.
Okay.
Uh, Alder Helmke?
Yes. My recollection is when we had this conversation was that we were not necessarily sold on keeping the historical nature of the building, because to Alder Cronin's point, having a historical building sitting there empty is actually not beneficial to the community. And so in order to do the things that the Art House 360 wants to do, it would likely involve taking apart so that a way that would not be able to make it, um, be a historical building. And I personally am in favor of that. It's an art house. We should, I mean, even on the outside, sorry, Mr. Charles, like, I am in favor of putting the art murals on the outside. I think that is what I think is going to make it, um, the unique building that it is. We've already seen that, like somebody else said, on the other parts of the downtown. It's amazing. It attracts tourists. You know, you see people taking pictures on social media with it. Um, so I just want to be like clear. I think that, that we did talk about this already, and I just want to like put it out there, because I know that you, I don't think you were, um, in office at that point.
Uh, other questions or comments? Alder Tucker Long?
Um, I guess I would say that, like, I understand the need to, you know, let the art house do what they want, but if we're talking about us owning the building and the art house potentially only being there for two years, giving up the option to have a historic building in town, um, seems short-sighted. I, um, um, you know, I mean, people come to see buildings on the National Historic Register, too. I mean, that is a different draw than coming to see a mural, but it is a tourist draw as well. And so I, I just don't want us to discount it if, you know, in favor of an art house that may or may not be there long-term.
Uh, Alder Touche, then Alder Kimmit?
I just want to remind the council, it's a school, and the condition we receive at the inside is not historical. All the original trim and millwork is mostly gone. Been through many resident renovations that no longer has maintained it in its historical state. So that's a big reason why we've kind of, I'll say compromised and said, well, let's try to keep the exterior historical and let the inside be whatever it can be to be successful. So just, I'm reiterating it that, so, since you weren't here at that time, but that's been the big driver on, should this be historical or not, and have the city try to preserve the external look of it from there. Because if we really want it to be historical, it needs to be a school. It's a large school. So what are we going to do with that? We're not a school district. Thank you.
Uh, Alder Kimmit?
Um, to sort of jump back to the timelines, is there an ideal timeline for this to be completed for the tenant and for the city? Like, what, what are we looking at right now?
Mr. Olick?
We've discussed the end of last year, um, or, uh, the end of next year. Um, yeah, back to the future here.
Really late.
I was going to say, wow.
Yeah, the end of next year. Um, but, but they're really, there's nothing definite, and it really depends on their fundraising efforts and what they can raise and our considerations, too, and, and what we can do. The, the one comment I will make is, the park, I believe, is slated for completion by the end of this year. So the, the discussion on re-tearing up things, you know, I, I hesitate to say, depending on how much work would have to go into the back area there, uh, that faces the park, we may end up digging back into places that were already dug, um, given our fiscal constraints, time constraints, and all that kind of stuff. But, but anyway, um, yeah, so, you know, fundraising efforts and what, what's been, being decided will be decided in the next year.
Okay. So, um, what does the tenant, potential tenant need from us in order to start that fundraising? The lease?
Mr. Kleinmeyer?
Uh, you know, I, I'm not sure to what extent they've, they've, my belief is they've already started fundraising, but I think that they've run into the same situation, um, that other nonprofits have. I mean, if you're going to donate money, you, you essentially want to make sure it's going to happen. That being said, I mean, you guys have a huge decision on your hands right now, so I'm not saying anybody's going to drag their feet, but I would also be wary of moving too, too quickly. Um, especially when you go back to that initial agreement was, the city's not putting any money into this property, it's just going to be conveyed for a dollar. And so if the council does choose that it wants to spend the money to fix up the building, which is certainly within your discretion, that's a dramatic difference from where you were when the initial conveyance document was drafted, which is another reason to go, you know, make sure that you have all your ducks in a row before you get any, in anything executed. And there's still going to be a fair amount of work on preparation of the document, once the numbers come back to the council and you start making kind of higher-level decisions on how you want to move, would want to move forward with the lease.
So my line of questioning there was more to get to, if we can help them fundraise now, maybe the city has to kick in less later. So whatever we need to do to make that smooth for them.
I mean, I guess that would, maybe that's a directive to staff to keep it moving. Is that, is that kind of what we're?
Yes, I guess, or, or just, is there something aside from the completed lease that would help with that process?
Um, we can probably take the discussion offline and just.
Okay, sure.
Alder Tucker Long?
Is it possible to see the draft of the lease agreement that's being discussed, or?
Certainly you can see it. I mean, I would say, though, it's premature. If I were you, I would wait to look at it until you've made a determination as to how much money the city wants to potentially, uh, uh, provide to assist with the building, because if that amount, well, that amount's going to be higher than the dollar that was anticipated now. And so if that's what's going to happen, then my recommendation is going to be changes to the language in the lease, because you should have more control in light of the fiscal, uh, uh, the, the money that you're going to be putting into it.
Okay. And how would someone get a, do we get a copy from you or from Jamie, or?
Uh, we can, we can send a copy to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, I think I know the answer to this one. Uh, Mr. Olick, but have you received sufficient guidance?
Thank you for the feedback, everyone. Appreciate it. And, uh, you know, there's work to be done on it and definitely get the message, keep it moving. I, I agree. Um, you know, when you get things off your plate, that's always a little pat on the back. But, uh, but anyway, no, I could, I want to see them succeed. I want to make sure that, um, we have a, a great vibrant downtown, and this is a good way to do it. But you've just got to take into account your opinions and, and get the work done. Thank you.
Uh, last chance for comments, at least today. All right. With that, we will move on to item three, which is a discussion on possible action regarding the annexation agreement with Fred-Verona HC LLC pertaining to land adjacent to County Highway PD. Uh, before we get into the open session discussion, I just have a question. Can, can the, uh, comments made during public comment be addressed?
Yeah, actually, I'm prepared. So a, as stated in public comment, there's really kind of two issues that are still out there based on the negotiations between city staff and the developer, and so a lot of work has been done to this point. Um, the statements made by the developer regarding concerns about signing an agreement where they would be required to provide water looping through land that they do not own is a valid and a reasonable thing, issue for them to raise. I think what we want to do is discuss in closed session, a number of items related to that, including alternatives. Um, the other item relates to a time period with which they would be required to make a payment for the traffic signals. Again, it's, the language is not at issue. It's specifically just years, and that's a, a term that we would like to be able to discuss with the council in closed session.
That makes sense. Uh, any other questions or comments for open session? Uh, seeing none, uh, with that, I would take a motion to go into closed session. Uh, Alder Posey?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for discussion on possible action regarding the annexation agreement with Fred Verona HC LLC pertaining to the land adjacent to County Highway PD. The common council may convene in a closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business when other competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session to take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Posey. Is there a second? Second by Alder Kimmit. Uh, this is, of course, is a roll call vote. If Clerk Luke would be so kind as to read the roll.
Alder Person Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Person Helmke?
Aye.
Alder Person Hoaks?
Aye.
Alder Person Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Person Kimmit?
Aye.
Alder Person Posey?
Aye.
Alder Person Touche?
No.
And Alder Person Tucker Long?
Aye.
Uh, with that, the motion succeeds seven to one. Uh, we'll be in closed session as soon as doors are closed.
All right, it is eight fifty-four and we are back in open session. We had extensive, an extensive discussion and provided staff with a lot of feedback and they were making contact with the applicants. And we'll move forward from there. Any comments on this item? Seeing none, we will move on to item twelve, which is German. Motion by the Tschütscher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I believe, Alder Kim. All those in favor of German, say aye.
Aye.
All those no? And we adjourned at eight fifty-four. Thank you, everyone.